Good evening, the school board meeting is called to order. Would you please stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes ma'am. Chair Seberg.
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Spall.
Here.
And Mrs. Bresia.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Dr. Newman, any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
No ma'am.
Can I get a motion to approve our public meeting agenda?
Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Tonight we have one superintendent's announcements and spotlights. Dr. Thomas, could you please join us up front? Dr. Thomas, we wanted to thank you for your service to Manassas City Public Schools. You've been with us a couple years and I'd like to read this plaque that we have for you. "The city of Manassas School Board recognizes Dr. Shavise Thomas with gratitude and appreciation for two years of dedicated service to the Manassas City Schools." Thank you very much.[142.59][142.59](applause)[143.59][143.59](inaudible)
Thank you. This is a pleasant surprise and I do feel honored. This has been just a very rewarding experience for me. I'd like to take this opportunity to say thank you publicly to Dr. Newman for giving me an opportunity to serve on your cabinet. I do appreciate you and I have grown and learned so much from the best. And to the school board, thank you for welcoming me, welcoming me and making me feel at home and allowing me to grow in my journey. I do appreciate it. I told Dr. Newman I want to come back if something opens for me, but I do thank you. I've loved working with the Department of Student Services, every single one of them. I won't start naming names because I'm going to forget, but the directors were wonderful. This has been by far one of my most rewarding experiences within my 28 years of education. So, thank you very much. I'm very honored. Wherever I go, I'm going to put this on the wall and think of you and the opportunity that was afforded to me for these past two years. Thank you.[231.23][231.23](applause)
And I just want to add that I want to thank you for always keeping students first. And I'm really going to miss your positivity and your exuberance for which you did your work with. Thank you very much.
And I'll just end it with another thank you. We had a meeting today where we shared our thoughts about where it's going to happen for you in the future, but as we just said, always know that there will be a place for
This concludes our spotlights for this evening. And I'll move along to board committee reports. And I'll go to Vice Chair Stevens, who chairs our policy committee.
Thank you Chair. The policy committee has met several times over the past few months. The policy committee meets shortly after the VSBA reviews and updates model policies for public school boards across the state. The VSBA update is based on legislation that is passed during the general assembly session. So, updates come out in late winter and again in late spring. The majority of policies are based on legislation that goes into effect July 1st. The first meeting on May 5th, the committee met to discuss multiple policies recently updated in relation to new legislation. These policies were on the discussion agenda at our most recent school board meeting and are on tonight's consent agenda. The committee meeting, the committee met again on June 4th to discuss two policies, policy IGR, grading, and policy GBEF, lactation support for employees. Updates are being made to policy IGR and will be presented for discussion at the regular school board meeting on July 9th. While policy GBEF was originally discussed on May 5th, the committee had additional questions and to determine whether the policy in question aligned with the World Health Organization's recommendations and Virginia Code relating to lactation services, lactation supports for employees. The policy committee is confident that policy GBEF follows the recommendations of the World Health Organization and Virginia Code. The policy committee meeting met again today to look at additional batch of model policies and those will be presented on the discussion agenda on July 9th and then on the consent agenda on July 23rd.
Thank you Vice Chair. No other policy or no other committee reports, so we'll move on. Citizens comments. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about services, policies, and affairs of the city of Manassas Public Schools. Because we have an agenda we need to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you have taken to be here and we treat citizens' comments as a public hearing and do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of concern or interest. Please be respectful when presenting your comments. And I have signed up, Mr. Eric Godwin.
Good evening, Dr. Newman, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, and the rest of the school board of the city of Manassas. I have a great announcement to make this evening. So, the Manassas Public Schools CTE mentorship program is seeking mentors for the 24-25 school year. The mentorship program application is now available and will be closing on July 26th. The program flyer can be found on our social media pages. And any individual interested in mentoring Osborne High School students in a monthly small group setting, please feel free to reach out to me via email for more information. We're really, really excited about launching this program. I know we've kind of been working towards it, we've been planning and things like that. So, we're looking forward to launching this. And if anybody's interested in reaching out, feel free to contact me or Ms. Taylor or anybody on the CTE team about mentoring our Osborne students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Godwin. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Anyone at all? Moving along to our consent agenda, can I get a motion please?
Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mr. Hollingsworth, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. On tonight's discussion agenda is student services, our 24-25 student code of conduct. This has been, did you want to say anything, Dr. Thomas? Okay.
Good evening again, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, Dr. Newman, and members of the board. Today I'm going to discuss the minimal changes to our code of conduct for the 24-25 school There were minimal changes to the code of conduct to include some grammatical changes and the changes in the format and also with the font. On page two, the table of contents was added and finalized with section numbers and page numbers. I'm sorry, on the first page. On page two and page 27, we replaced parent with parent slash guardian, and I think we did that throughout the document. Also, what's wrong?
Ignore that.
Oh, okay.[702.75][702.75](laughing) So, here we have the added table of contents to include the section numbers and page numbers. And then when we get to page two of the document, we highlighted where we initially had parents, but we added and replaced that with parent slash guardian. On page nine, we added a section. Oh my god, I can't see that.[727.51][727.51](inaudible) On page nine, on page nine at the bottom, where it says students in pre-K, pre-kindergarten through grade six, at the end of that sentence, we put that it may be at the discretion of the building administrator or teacher. So, I'll read that section. It's dealing with the portable electronic devices. Students in pre-kindergarten through grade six may not use portable electronic devices on school property or when attending school-related events unless given explicit permission by the principal or designee. PEDs must be silenced and put away for the duration of the school day. Watches, that's watches, that serve as a dual purpose, may be worn at the discretion of the building administrator or teacher, and that was added. And that's basically all of the changes, other than some minor grammatical things and formatting for our code of conduct. Also, if you look through the document, you may see some red Xs or green Xs or some difference in the bullets or the font. And at this time, they all mean the same. There's no difference in whether it's a red X or a green X or a red check or a red X. All of those still indicate the list as presented in a bulleted form, but the colors doesn't, they don't mean anything at this time.
Well, very good. Thank you for that update. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
I have one comment, Ms. Chair. I really appreciate you highlighting the portable electronic devices, which includes cell phones.
Yes.
I just want to make sure parents and students are aware that we truly have had a policy for quite some time about cell phones. There's a lot in the news about many districts revisiting their cellphone policies. We've had one, we revised it several years ago, and here we are trying to give more direction as well. What I'd like to see is more implementation of these policies and code of conduct. So, I, my hope is that we'll see a difference this coming up, this coming up year. I think it's extremely important when we, our student representatives did a survey, one of the most common responses was many students felt like they didn't have the ability to really learn and think in the classroom. There was a lot of distractions and I suspect the cell phones and other personal devices were part of that. So, my hope is that we will truly enforce these things.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Bresia?
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. I also wanted to highlight, I believe we did, the process was multi-layered, there were many meetings about this, and I think we did also address the dress code and in addition to the portable electronic devices. Now, it wasn't just kindergarten through sixth grade that we added, we also clarified what the expectations were. You know, I pulled up, I have the PED, I have the section here, but my fellow academic committee members can weigh in if I'm misstating this. But I do believe we clarified what the expectations were for grades nine to 12.
We did.
And then grades seven to eight. So, would you like to talk on that?
Yes, we did, as she, as Ms. Williams was talking, I was thinking about that, that we did break those out to be a little bit more explicit at each level. So, yes, thank you for that, Ms. Bresia. So, what we did here, we spelled out students in nine through 12 may use the PEDs before the morning, tardy bell, after the dismissal bell, between classes. So, here in this section, we explicitly stated when the portable devices would be allowable in the nine through 12. We also said that they must be silenced and not visible during the instructional periods. Watches that serve as a dual purpose may be worn, however, phone features are to be turned off when the PED use is prohibited. So, that's during instructional time. And then in this grade seventh and eighth, seventh through eighth, which would be our middle school, we said that they may use PEDs before the morning tardy bell, after the dismissal bell, and at other times when explicitly permitted by a school employee. PEDs must be silenced and put away for the duration of the school day. And watches that serve a dual purpose may be worn, however, phone features are to be off for the duration of the school day. And then here, again, we have also expectation for pre-K through six, and then we added at the end of pre-K through six, that the watches that serve a dual purpose may be worn at the discretion of the building administrator or teacher. Is that?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I wanted to speak a little bit about how our committee process unfolded for this.
Sure.
Our previous electronic device policy was not very clear and after consulting, we consulted with all of the principals and got some clarity as to what was actually happening in our buildings at different levels. So, now that our student, this was intended to be written out as a communications initiative, you could say, that, so people would know what their expectations were at each grade level coming in. Just, we basically designed a policy around our current practice. I do want to echo what Ms. Williams was alluding to with what we've seen in the news with people taking, with school divisions across the state taking even harder looks at their cellphone policy. I think it would be wise for all of us to keep our eyes and ears open as to how those policies start to, you know, start to look in those other divisions and how successful they are. Because I think that this is a fast-evolving space and that we need to be, you know, constantly reevaluating it. We did have a good, I'm going to call it a runway, we had a good long runway, lots of different meetings on this, lots of different versions of this. And I think that next year, we, that same, I think we need that same long runway next year, especially since the academic committee will be reconstituting with Chair Hollingsworth's departure. So, I also wanted to draw your attention to the dress code. Let you speak on the dress code.
I'm here, okay. So, with our dress code, we wanted it to, we did, we did speak in detail about the dress code to ensure that the dress code was clear. And we also talked about the enforcement of the dress code. But I'll take a minute here and just talk about what we added in our code of conduct for dress and appearance. Students are encouraged to attend school dressed for success each day. Overall appearance at school and non-sponsored activities should be respectful of an inclusive school community. Students should refrain from wearing any item of clothing or accessory that may be, that may negatively impact the educational process, constitute a threat of health and safety of others, or show prejudice or disrespect towards other individuals or the institutions. The following includes, but is not limited to, representation of clothing, footwear, accessories, and violation of the student dress code. Here in our bulleted form, we have sexually explicit obscene derogatory languages, language or images, endorsing or promoting hatred, containing, promoting, or endorsing illegal behavior, containing, promoting, or endorsing violence, containing threats or gang symbols, promoting the unlawful use of weapons, alcohol, tobacco, drug, or drug paraphernalia. And for here, we really wanted to kind of spell out and be more specific in our policy. Again, as Ms. Bresia stated, we did look at a plethora of policies. Some of them were very vague, some of them were too general, but we wanted to really hone in on setting the expectations of our students coming to school dressed for success.
Thank you, yes. That was, that was, that was good, that was right. And it was a similar process as the cell phones and the other committee members, you guys can feel free to pipe up too.
Yes.
Where we had our old version of this policy had a lot of Shelby no wider than one and a half inches.
That's right.
Shelby no, and our administrators do a lot of things, but they do not walk around with rulers.
That's it.
Measuring people's skirts. So, this is, I think, a much better, clearer way to communicate to our students what's expected of them.
And if you're like me and you're like five foot tall, you're going to get away with a shorter skirt than someone who's five nine because, you know, the length of the skirt and things of the sort. So, you're right, we really looked into getting away from adding more things for our principals and our administrators to worry about and just make it where they're dressed for success and then have some things that really impact or may impede in the instructional environment.
Right. And empowering those administrators to act when something does.
Violate the code.
Does do that.
Right.
So, you know, I thought it was a very good process that we all engaged in. I look forward to revisiting it this again next year. And thank you, Dr. Thomas, for not every, not just this, not just the work you've done here for this code of conduct, but the work you've done for the division.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated.
My pleasure.
Are there any other questions or comments regarding the code of conduct?
I do, real quick.
Mrs. Spall?
Hi, Dr. Thomas. I just want to, I guess, send the message loud and clear that you can expect the school board to enforce this code of conduct with regard to personal electronic devices next year, being at the discretion of the administrator, and that will support the use for educational purposes. And then also, we had had a previous conversation, but just ask whether it's staff or academic committee, I'm not sure, but to evaluate the weighted value of those icons. So, whether it's red dots, green checks and circles, red Xs in circles, some Xs are all white.
So, what you're saying is just make it consistent throughout.
Yeah.
See if we can go back with the formatting.
Unless, unless there is something that's got a, you know, a higher value or something, you know, if it needs a red arrow instead of a dot, then that would make sense, as long as it's obvious why we used something different.
Okay.
And I don't know if that's this year or next year, but just put it in the hopper there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall. Ms. Vice Chair Stevens?
Thank you. We talked quite a bit about portable electronic devices, so I'm going to go back and talk about them again.
Okay.
You outlined what the expectations are per when students can have or not have personal electronic devices. But I want to go back to that first paragraph under section 14 of portable electronic devices because just being able to use your device doesn't mean unlimited use, and it is a privilege, and I just want to read this out loud.
Okay.
Student use of PEDs at any permitted time and location shall not distract the student or others from learning or participating in the educational process, interfere with the work of school employees, create a safety hazard or concern, and/or violate any other provisions of the code of conduct. So, it is important to keep those in mind as well, that all the other pieces of the code of conduct apply when personal electronic devices can be out. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Brooks?
I want to say that, you know, not being part of this committee, I want to acknowledge the hard work you and your staff and the committee put into clarifying these issues and, you know, it was a lot of work and we all really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, so, we will take this and move it forward to the action agenda for next time. Mrs. Spall, I don't know if you were, did you want those changes before it comes up on action?
Uh, no.
Okay. And we look forward to processing them so we can have it available at the beginning of the new school year.
As soon as possible.
Okay.
So, we are moving forward with the consistency of the bullets throughout, with the colors?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I made note of that. Okay.
Very good, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, on our action agenda tonight, we have some unfinished business, and that is the appointing the designee of division superintendent to act in his absence. So, this is something that we normally do at our organizational meeting in January, but because of a change in personnel and structure of the superintendent's cabinet, we need to proceed with this action. And if somebody could make a motion, that'd be great.
Do we need to read this out loud first or just make a motion?
You want me to read it? In accordance with 22.1 through 69 and 22.1-76 of the Code of Virginia, the division superintendent recommends that Mr. Craig Gaffeler, primary designee, and Dr. Jennifer Casada, alternate designee, be appointed by the school board as the primary and alternate designees of the superintendent during his absence or inability to perform for the period of July 1, 2024, to the 2025 organizational meeting.
Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the revised resolution R 2024-01 designating Mr. Craig Gaffeler, primary designee, and Ms. Dr. Jennifer Casada, alternate designee, to act in the superintendent's absence for the period of July 1, 2024, to the 2025 organizational meeting.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Williams, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve revised resolution R 2024-01 designating Mr. Craig Gaffeler, primary designee, and Dr. Jennifer Casada, alternate designee, to act in the superintendent's absence for the period of July 1, 2024, to the 2025 organizational meeting. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Moving along to board member comments, and I'll call first on Mr. Hollingsworth.
Thank you Chair. I'm just so happy to hear about the mentorship program with the CTE department, so I just want to reiterate, if you could please visit our Osborne website and fill out the application to be a mentor, I greatly appreciate it and support our young adults. Also, I want to say thank you, Dr. Thomas, for your time. It's been a pleasure and I wish you nothing but the best in your future endeavors. That's all out.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth. Mrs. Bresia?
Thank you. I also want to express my excitement about the CTE mentorship program, long anticipated. I will make sure personally to get the word out for anybody who I think would be a good fit for that program, see if we can get you a lot of applications to go through. And of course, you know, Dr. Thomas, I already mentioned my appreciation for you and the service that you've given to this division, and it is certainly our loss and your next endeavors gained to have your energy and attention wherever you may go. I also want to express my appreciation to our, my colleagues here because we just returned from our division retreat, which I did find to be a very meaningful exercise. So, I did, I did enjoy that process and wanted to credit the people who organized it, Chair Seberg, Dr. Newman, Katie Keegan, and Ms. Erica Loach, who gave us the fierce conversations training. Fierce conversations, be trained in them.[1739.26][1739.26](laughing) I give that a 10 out of 10 rating for the effectiveness of that. I also wanted to preview for the public here, we talked about our code of conduct today, it's going to be on our action agenda next week, but this is not, as everybody knows, the code of conduct is a part of a discipline, you know, program. It is not the one and only, you know, it is not the seminal achievement of a discipline program in our public schools. And we did discuss at our retreat that there is going to be a deeper dive into behavioral solutions happening at the division level over the course of next year. So, I am excited to see where that process takes us and the recommendations that come out of that because as Ms. Williams alluded to when she was, gave her comments on the code of conduct, you know, without enforcement, it's just a piece of paper, and the piece of paper is important, you've got to have that saying the right things and out, you know, and being clear as to what the expectations. and being clear as to what the expectations are. But there's a second half to that equation that we learned at the retreat is going to be worked on. So I'm excited about that.
Thank you, Mrs. Bresia. Mrs. Williams?
I'm not going to repeat what everybody just expressed prior to my, my comments. However, I am going to express my appreciation to Dr. Thomas. A couple of years ago, after COVID, not only the State Department of Education, but also the U.S. Department of Education really came down on school systems across the nation about absenteeism. And you, I felt you really took charge of that. They didn't give us much time to implement any, much like they have in the past. And I feel like you really, you really grabbed that challenge by the horns and did a really good job. So I really appreciate all of your efforts, and I'm going to miss you. And I'm going to miss those fancy shoes.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Brooks?
Thank you, Chair. I definitely want to say, you know, give my gratitude for Dr. Thomas for all you've done. You, your enthusiasm will definitely be missed, but also just your love of our students and of our schools and our district. I'm looking forward personally to the CT mentorship program. And so congratulations on that. And I too want to echo Ms. Bresia's comments about the retreat. You know, there's a lot of hard work that went into it. You know, we appreciate all of the structure and everything that Ms. Garza provides for us too. Because, you know, it's a lot of work, and we see, we see that. But it also was a lot of work for us in a good sense, where we had a nice chunk of time to really work together, really delve into, you know, some topics that we needed, you know, time to do. So it's a really nice thing to be able to work together on these retreats. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Spall?
Hi. I also want to thank Dr. Thomas for her commitment to Manassas City Public Schools. I want to wish Happy Summer School for the kids that launched on Monday. I also want to thank everyone for their School Board, School Board Retreat work. It was a, it was a really nice effort, and it proved to me how valuable retreats can be. I'd like to ask everyone for their well wishes for our joint session coming up, that it's, it is productive on Thursday. I think that just taking it one step further, I'll ask everyone to highlight the mentorship program on our socials because it is a really important thing. And I know we've got some art and some things that are promotable. So we should find them and share them if we can. And then I want to thank, congratulate Mr. Gaffeler and Dr. Casada on their promotions and thank them for, you know, agreeing to guide the ship in Dr. Newman's absence. I think that's all.
Thank you. Vice Chair Stevens?
Thank you. It seems that every meeting we have, whether it's a full board meeting, it's a retreat, or it's a committee meeting, CTE comes up. And it always comes up in a very positive manner. And I think that speaks to the two individuals who are running CTE and all of the amazing things that are happening. And I really hope folks take advantage of becoming a mentor. Because being an adult in the life of a teenager has a lasting impact that carries them into adulthood. And it's a great way to give back to your community, to give back to the schools, and to give back to people in general. CTE, it's one of the shining stars of the City of Manassas. And we, it is a highlight to share whenever we talk about our school division. Check out our CTE program. Dr. Thomas, I really appreciate the time we had to work together because we worked closely together on many things related to the Policy Committee. So I appreciate that time and your explanation of the legal ease of many said policies. Good luck to wherever you go and come back and visit whenever you can. Summer School is now in session. That means our kids are going to school again. There are buses out on the roads. It's state law to stop for buses with flashing lights and the red stop sign out. And please don't forget, all of our school buses have cameras, and they will catch a picture of you if you don't stop. We also are serving meals to our summer school students, and we are serving meals to all eligible Manassas City school students at the designated schools. So please take advantage of those. I hope our summer school students enjoy their weeks of summer school, learning, growing, and getting ready for the following year. And I hope everyone enjoys the rest of their June.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And I'll just wrap it up. I've already said my goodbyes to Dr. Thomas. And I want to echo the reminder about the joint meeting. This is a, the joint meeting is a meeting between City Council and School Board where we can take time to discuss matters back and forth that affect us both. And on the agenda for Thursday night at five-thirty at the Public Safety Building will be our boundary line adjustment that is required. We are required to comply with, and we will be discussing that with City Council. And then also, while we were at retreat, we discussed some square footage needs that Manassas City Public Schools has currently and into the future. So come and listen or tune into the meeting and see what's going on. And with that, it wraps up board members' comments, and I'll ask for a motion to go into closed session.
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section two dot two dash three-seven-one-one A paragraph, one-one paragraph A paragraph, Part A, Paragraph one of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty is amended for the following purposes. Two dot two dash three-seven-one-one, Part A, Paragraph one, Discussion of Superintendent's Evaluation.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Brooks, that the School Board of the City of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section two point two dash three-seven-one-one, Part A. Paragraph one of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty is amended for the following purposes. Two point two dash three-seven-one-one, Part A, Paragraph one, Discussion of Superintendent's Evaluation. Is there any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven-zero. We are going into closed session. Thank you.